Dili maabot sa mga preacher dito. Walay nakasulti siya nga dun na'y Diyos. So paano karoon siya makahanggol ng kaluasan? Pag-abot sa paghukom. Ang pasihanan si Ginoo? Konsyens niya. Bisapag walay nakasulti sa iyahah, nagwali nga dun na'y Diyos. Pero sa pagtanaw niya sa mga butangsi ang palibot, paghangad niya, o nga namaling adlaw. Kadabuntag, musidlak, niya morsal paghapon. O nga no'ng dun na may bituon, nga no'ng dun na may bulan, nga no'ng dun na may mga kahoy, nga no'ng dun na may may dagat. Okay. So, dun na'y naghimo ni Ine. Kay konsinsya man na. Kala konsinsya grabe na, di ka kadinay. Dun na'gy naghimo ano eh. Impossible man po ni Ob. Kini akong gamay ng balay, naghimo direng tunghab na'ny naghimo. So kini akong ipuwian 'yung kalibutan. Dun na'y naghimo ni Ine. So kaling naghimo ni Ine, muni akong simbahon. Muni akong simbahon. So sa paghimo ni Ana, kinsaman ka, Diyos ka ang akong ilan na'ng naghimo ni'ng kalibutan. Ako kang ilan akong Diyos. Ikaw akong ilas ako, kinabuhin nga Diyos o ginasimba ko ikaw. Ang mali, kumiingon siya nga, ah dun na'y mga butang. Uy, diya kibalong ang kahoy. Uy, diya sa kahoy basta mo anak ko din na. Manindug akong tingkoy. Ang kahoy na'y ang simbahon. Ang baton na'y ang simbahon. Katingatan, amo na'y mali. Mun na'y mali. Pero ang gahimo sa kahoy, ang gahimo sa bulan, ang gahimo sa kuwan mo yang di-ascryga, ang naghimo ni Ine, ang Creator na'ny mo'y akong simbahon. Dili kay ang Creation akong simbahon. So diha raman, sinalan ang konsinsya na'to ato ang ipairan pagayo. Nganaman, ang pasihanan si Ginoo siyang paghukom sa tao, iyahang konsinsya o gangyang konsinsya. Dili ikon mo dinay Ine ya. Ikon mo dinay. So ingat ana, kaimportante ang moral law or konsinsya. That's why, um sa may purpose, diya sa verse 20, nganong gino, nganong gepakita si Ginoo ang iyahang invisible qualities, pinagi sa Creation, bisan di siya makita mismo iyang pagka-Diyos. Pero ibilis siya nga dun na'y Diyos tungkol sa Creation. Nganong girebel si Ginoo, kay para ang tao walay excuse. Buti pasabot, o niya panas paghukom, di makaingon ang tao nga, uy man ko kita. Goni mo Lord. Saan nakapagtuo niya mga wataman ka makita. Dili siya ka, dili na siya acceptable nga. Reason kay nga naman. Ang Creation na'y muna kita oh. Nakita niya 'yung Creation. Ano makamutuoog Diyos nga na may Creation, diha'y muna kita. Okay. So God give us wisdom and common sense which are enough to comprehend and to reconcile what these things around us are for. Marikonsaila na'to, kining atong konsinsya, enough na na makarekonsail, nga nga no'ng namning mga butangan, there must be God. Nganong na amaning butangan eh. Enough na siya. So man's conscience is a witness against him. Ah, man's conscience is a witness against his sin of unbelief. Isakala kong sala sa tao ang sin of unbelief, kanadili siya motuo, nga dun na siya'y Creator. Ang tao di motuo nga dun na siya'y Creator, mun na iyahang kadakong nga sayo, sa iyahang kinabuhin. Men should use simple logic. Kitang mga tao, atong gamitan ng simple nga logic, and simple analysis concerning this matters. Buto ano no'ng dun namin 'yung mga bukiran, no'ng ano no'ng dun namin 'yung mga suba. Nitungharani, naagim maghi, dun na'gy Creator ano eh. O kala nga Creator, designer, kina naman, ano nindut mang kaipagka-plaster. Designer gusya. Okay. So dun na'gy ginatawag nga evolution versus Creation Theory. Evolution, parehas ni, kesa author kesa evolution, Darwin oh. Charles Darwin. Abinemo si Charles Darwin, diha na siya sa, ba ba siya kamatayan. Na naglisod na siya. Ang iyang wish on ta, iyahang maritrib ang tanan niya mga ideology. Niya ideology, ganyan sa, wala'y Diyos, ang tao gika's ungo'y. So gusto niya ng iretreat, dito tinoon, dito tinoon. Ang problema, ang iyahang ideology sold out na sa tanang universities, tibo kalibutan, di niya niya maritrib. Motong nga grabing regret niya, diha sa ba ba sa kamatayan. Ang mga scientist, kakadarapa sila. Sige sila discover diya sa space, diya sa kalangitan. Kita nila ang black hole. Para asan lang black hole, o sa manag, ganyan sa paghimo ano na ang manalihan. Kakadarapa sila 'yung unsana. Pero kung tuwaan na rin, kung motuo lang sila sa Creation accounts Genesis, nga Ginoo may naghimo niyang tanan, wala na solvan na, di ba? Only by faith that God is the Creator. Okay, atong kuwan, atong May, month of May, dun na'ny nagsponsor sa kuha. Og kauban ako kong sponsor, na kato may Oh Holy Land, Jordan, Israel, o Egypt. Sadito misa Jordan, na kato misa Petra. Is familiar mo, Petra? Dito sa Petra, ang rock, buto mountain rock. Ganyan sa pagdesign nga, ang mga mountain, ano, nga rock, na diha halos gaabot parabili kadagko, pero dun na'y dalan din eh. Paano siya naitabo? Ang explanation is, tubig, no suba, hangtus gigagi, sigigagi, hangtun naglalom, hangtun naglalom, hangtun naglalom siya. So act of nature. Kay bulungan ka, alantaw niya mga act of nature. Pagatupon na mo sa Egypt, pagalantaw na mo sa pyramid, amazing podkaayo, pero man-made siya. Man-made. So dito ibang makumpara, makumpirne mo ang act of nature, buti pasabot nga, binuhat sa Ginoo o ang ginatawag nga, binuhat sa tao. Pero tikka amazing kaayo maki-insuunan. Ang pyramid nga, ang halo block, mag-refrigerator kadagko, ganyan sa nila paghanta dito sa una, nawala pa 'yung mga equipments na grabe. Amazing siya, but it was just but man-made. Pero ang act of nature, which is Petra, so amazing kaayo. Okay, now, o sa dapat natuhimoon? Dapat, ang atong daan nga konsepto, atong idistabilize, o sa daan atong konsepto, to see is to believe, ato na'ng gubon na klase ng konsepto. Alistan na'to, ang atong establish, alistan na'to, believe first and then you will see. Ang uba ng mga tao, di sila motuoog Diyos kay, wala sila kakitaog Diyos. Pero ang mga believer, mga sasama na'to, believer si Ginoo, ni'to taginoo, bisagwa'ta kakita, o niya, sa ikalawang kinabuhin, makita na na'to ang Diyos, personally. So ang atong konsep, daan nga konsep na'to, si is to believe ato na'ng idistabilize. Ugalis na na'to sa atong ibalihon. Na believe first and then you will see. Di ba si Tomas, ang mga disipolo ni Yes Christ, ning ingon na nga, nabahanaw ang Ginoo, nabahanaw ang Ginoo. Ingon ni Tomas, ah di kumotoo. Gawas kung ako makita ang agi sa lansang, direng sa iyahang, sa iyahang kamot, o direng siyang tiil, makita na ko ang agi sa lansang, usap ako motuo. Karoon, one week after, tuwang ihipon ang mga disipolo ni Yes Christ, nagisgod sa pagkabahanaw ni Yes Christ. May ingon na po si kuwan si Tomas nga, di gyo't kumotoo, basali na ko makita ang agi sa lansang. Karoon kina ama si Yes Christ, ning tungha na siyang loyo. Paglinggit niya, uy, naamagod ang Ginoo. Isa ang Ginoo ko, Diyos ko. Niingon day si Jesus. So Tomas, tanawa ko, niyang agi sa lansang, o tanawa o, niara o. O Ginoo ko. So toon na ka, kanakakita, amang ka. Ingon ang Ginoo. Nag-iingon si Jesus, apan inon kay ka Tomas? Mas bulahan ang nagtoo nga wala nakakita. Too ka na karoon, kay nakakita ka na. Apan inon takka, nga mas bulahan kato'ng nagtoo nga wala makakita. Okay, that is why, akong challenge, kanatong tanan, kung dun na makanya niya konsepto, atong usbon, idistabilize na'to, ang daang konsepto nga'to si is to believe. Og atong alistan, og believe first and then you will see. Okay. Okay, so, direng ang kotob, ang ato ang lesson, our new lesson about makadiyos. Shall we pray? Thank you oh God for teaching us this morning a lesson concerning your existence oh God. We pray that the more we learn this kind of lesson or truth, our knowledge about you will increase also. Thank you oh God for teaching us that there is God who is the Creator of everything around us, not only Creator but Designer. And to you, as the Creator, the owner of our lives, we always ascribe to you our praises and our worship. Thank you oh God for this another day. Thank you because this day we could do something which is to do our responsibility. So we pray oh God for the legislators who will be doing their sessions today. We pray that your divine wisdom will be each one of them and help them come up a right decision concerning the continuous progress of the municipality of Epe. Bless them and bless also everyone of us, our visitors who are today, and continue to bless also all the Calgio family and all Epe linios. This is our prayer with so much thanksgiving and our hearts in the name of the Father, and of the Son, and of the Holy Spirit. Amen. Good morning and God bless everyone.
Any amendments, objection? I will land the motion here by put.
In general, but with the fruit stand just like last year that... The meeting with the chairperson on the committee on transportation, may I suggest that our media manager will bring with him the format, no?
...gamit sa kwan area ni Glinda, ngang beside sa ato ang market kwan, i-open mo na 'yap for parking pero with fee lang. Kaya iya mo 'to.
Sir, fifteen stools.
Fifteen stools.
Oh, kala-ara 'kin naa sa sulun. Walay labot ko.
Kwan, secure ba sila diya? Kung i-butan na to sila diya.
Security, wala na man si kwan.
Construction gaw.
Wala na may kwan sa taas.
Wala na. Complete 'to na. Roofing is slowly completed.
Thank you sir.
Thank you, Mr. Igman.
Good morning. Please use the restroom.
Honorable Vice Mayor Legario and... Stand up for to be recognized, okay? We had a privilege of having a courtesy call with the honorable mayor in the eye. Ah, three maquins pa, dito po sa Sambuanga, okay? Sila po 'yung ating mga sinasali sa ngayon na maging license massage therapist ah sa... Thank you.
Okay, may we proceed Mr. Flor with the reading of the minutes of the previous session.
Narbal Chair, I move to dispense the reading.
...with the reading of the minutes of the previous session. Any seconded or motion? Julie seconded by Darul Megha. Discussion? For the approval of the minutes of the previous session, any seconded or motion? Seconded by Narbal Megha.
Resolution endorsing the supplemental investment program number two for 2023 amounting to 27. Before we will discuss this matter, may I move for a two minutes recess?
Okay, recess for two minutes.
...
Apa i queries, clarifications coming from the body? Well, na pato ang budget officer before we...
Mr. Chair, can I move for a three minutes recess, Mr. Chair, for other members of the Sanggunean to look into the supplemental budget number three.
Sessus for three minutes.
Feeling rebersion of continuing appropriation and source name is from licensing section.
Mr. Atong pangitanga, sir.
Okay, can you make use of the microphone?
The source of...
Ah, the source of the continuing appropriation is from licensing section. Discovering to 3,433,422.
No, no, it's not, sir. The 3,433,482 is inter-account transfer from trust.
Items like for example, rebversion of current appropriation is coming from the office of the mayor?
No, from different offices. As stated here, sa source, sir, please refer to your copy. We have reversion from licensing. We have from madak. Those are two items from continuing appropriation.
Reversion, all these items should be reverted to the general fund? Ano, Mr. Guru?
Ah, lahi po doon siya, sir. If at the end of the year... Find it na inyong, inyuhang office supplies or traveling allowance sobra na. Isacrifice ninyo kay mas needed ang representation. So irevert na't...
Nga naanay funds bitaw allocated ano, nahorot siya o kwan? Nahorot siya... For na'to?
Yes. All incumbent and vacant positions appeal siya sa 2024. Pagcreated siya dapat supported with funds.
Thank you, Mamlin. Are we still expecting another supplemental budget before the end of this year?
Wala na.
Okay. One ay atong kuwanan.
Okay, so in addition to that, no? Question if we're still... Okay. Oh, supplemental.
Two times a day lang na, five days ka. Sobra 200,000.
Yung ganay, nangay yung ganay ko. Research eh, tanong, mason kotek yun doon. Kaniya basa sayang po na kopyo ba.
Nagusa yun, nag-nyo. Wala na, ang 200.
Hello. Hello. Sir. Padayun ta sir. Okay manyun to na. Morag makarese pagi tani ba? Morag magrese sa tani ay motiwas. Napai mga second reading. Sir Bob. Excuse me sir Bob. Padayun ta. Padayun ta sir. Padayun ta para... Okay, uh, good morning once again. Session be back to order.
Hello. Uy. Lagi ano na ito? Kati. Uh, kanta ambak ta sir.
Huh?
Ambak lang ta. Balik ka na to ni? Sayang ah. Anan na, anan na.
Mora't eh?
Ah, okay na.
Monang figure eh?
Ah.
200.
Uh, wala pa sa book na. Ang source lang na to. Katurang supplemental ayay pinasa. Iyahang supplemental budget number 3 ang reversion. Sa reversion mo ko.
Monang figure.
Oo, mura. Monan na siya.
Pero ang ato ang kuwan. Saning SIP ma'roning 27.
Ah, ah.
Okay.
New iteman siya.
New item siya.
Yes, yes.
Mister Chair. I move for the approval of this, uh... Resolution number 0, uh, number 4. Series of 2023. The supplemental investment program. Number 2 for 2023. Amounting to 27 million. 38,520 pesos. Of this municipality.
In second to third motion. Julie seconded by honorable Alabid Mahamad. Discussion? Any amendments? Objection? Hearing the motion is here by approval. Next item, Madam Secretary.
Next item, Mister Chair.
Mister Chair?
Yes.
Supplemental na.
Yes.
Item F dash E. We have here. The supplemental budget number 3 for CY 2023. Of the general fund amounting to 21 million. Edmido 999,048.65. Requesting for appropriate action and approval.
Ang amang. Ang amang. 21 rey muna.
Okay. And we also have. Uh, supplemental budget under item E dash 6. Supplemental budget number 4 for CY 2023. Of the general fund amounting to 4,336,000. Edmido 424,000. A million requesting for appropriate action.
Just, uh, just a point of order, Mister Chair. We have only one supplemental budget. Uh, supplemental budget number 3. Am I correct? Uh, to this, Mister Chair. I move for the approval of this supplemental budget number 3 of this municipality. Amounting to 238,565,065 centapos.
200?
Uh, 2... No. 238 million.
Huh?
No?
No, no, no.
No, no.
28?
Ah, 28. Million. 565,065 centapos.
In second to third motion. Unanimous, this seconded. Discussion? Any amendments? Objection? Hearing the motion is here by approval. Item?
Next. Under item. Uh, E dash 4. Copy of the administrative order number 12. From Lucas Berzamin, Executive Secretary, Office of the President. Authorizing the grant of service recognition incentives. To government employees for fiscal year 2023. At a uniform rate not exceeding 20,000 prorata based on the length of service.
For your information. For your information.
Also, item E dash 5. Copy of the administrative order number 13. Again from Lucas Berzamin, Executive Secretary. Office of the President authorizing the grant of. Ratuity. Pay to contract of service and job order workers in the government for fiscal year 2023. Not exceeding 5,000 each. One time. Ratuity pay on prorata basis.
Okay, for your information.
Item E dash 7. Julie endorse from the mayor. Copy of the MOA to be entered into by and between LGU IPIL. And the Department of Agriculture Regional Office 39. For the implementation of the Kadiwa financial grant assistance for fisher folks. Cooperatives and associations.
Honorable Chair. I move that this matter be referred to committee on agriculture.
Uh, yes, before we refer to committee on agriculture, yes, honorable Chair.
Mister Chair. I think there is no need to refer that to the committee on agriculture. Considering that the request of the mayor. Is, uh... Considered as, uh... This item as urgent.
Urgent.
Urgent. So I have read already the, the MOA. And our participation is only... Is only... The, the LGU will only provide. Uh...
20%?
Provide. As an equity. Equivalent to 20%.
Urgent? Urgent, okay. Can they move for the urgency of this said matter?
So, I, uh, considering that the... The request lumiar is, uh... Urgent. So... I move for the urgency of this, uh...
Any second to third motion? The motion is here by carried.
So... I move, I move to...
Content.
To approve. I move to approve.
Content.
The contents of the MOA. Uh... Authorizing the...
Content sa sir.
Ah.
Content sa.
The contents. The contents of the MOA.
Okay, next second to the motion. Julie seconded by honorable Negat. Discussion?
Discussion, Mister Chair. Uh... This humble representation would like to ask. And would like to be clarified on the responsibility of the local government.
Uh, our responsibility, the, um, the local government unit. Or LGU IPIL. Is to provide di Kadiwa. Uh, certain portion of balat located data. Dun Andres. Way dan area to hectares. So... I think. Woman marig, woman is specify dere kung pilak is kromiters. Pero di barangay, di, di Dun Andres. Barangay is, uh... Willing.
Willing, willing to... Willing to provide?
Actually, actually, this area no, two hectares no. Is titled. In the name of, uh, LGU IPIL. So ako librepay dito sa assessor's office.
Mm, patlang, patlang.
Kaya abin ako ang tagiya salute is, uh... Owned by the barangay. Kaya owned by the barangay so the MOA should be. Interginto between the... Barangay and, and... De. Pero kaya owned by LGU IPIL. Sumula nga. Ang LGU IPIL mo'y. Guan.
Mister Chair, can we have?
Ang atong kuwan, ang atong participation. Is to give. At least 20, 20% as equity. So kung miyongka equity, kubalan to 20% to ba... 20% 3 million 500,000. That's kubalan to 700,000. So I think di, di lot as equity. As consider as equity ating di, di banyo bilan. Should be kubalan to 700,000. That's consider as, uh, what? Uh, parang di, di... Parang we, we satisfy already the requirements of the, to...
Okay, honorable Alba. Yes. Honorable Chair. Yes.
Mister Chair?
Ah, yes, honorable Alba still has the floor, yes.
Uh... Can we have a copy of that particular area? In barangay Dun Andres. Of which the honorable Ramos, uh, stated earlier.
I have, I went there sa assessor's office, Giniya. Be there with the Mao. With Mister Apau. I was able to secure the, only the. Tax declaration. Kaya wala medya ang assessor's to asa sampugas ite. Ateloga seminar. Pero di fact nga ang tax declaration issue din nire mo LGU IPIL. Uh... Tumatek nga.
Nah, wama.
Di, di, di title, if there is title, it should be in the name of by LGU IPIL.
Mister Chair?
Yes.
Uh... Kabalo ba si Sir Ramos asa yun particular nga area? Because we are still on the period of discussion. Para makabalo yuta. Before we will, we will approve that.
Ako din, ako din to di assessor. Kaleng in charge diya. Uh, di... Kala pang... Sehngakanan jim, sigur ya. Dun Andres.
Ah, diha sa kuwan.
Di tire area ob, guan. Two hectares, two hectares kung ano.
Two hectares?
Asa, asa rapid.
Two hectares yudha tag.
Jele, two hectares ang sa... Owned by LGU IPIL. Pero mo islaes diya ob. I, 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 I am not so sure kung pilak is kromit pero diha't diha diwa.
Sir. Uh... Mister Chair? Mister Chair?
Yes.
Uh... Mag... Magconstruct, uh, trading post. To that area. Am I, am I correct sir? Then pilaki yursa ang atong program ano sir?
Uh, to complete because di, di, di... Ang... Ang 35 billion is intended for the construction of the Kadiwa. Ano di, di trading post. Ang 35 billion. Hunya. Ang period of construction is one year. So pag after one year ano, so we'll... We'll report to the day completed the construction. In order to liquidate.
Mister Chair? Uh...
Honorable Chair. Yes, honorable Alba, yes.
I really want to continue my, my inquiry. But with regard to this, to this program, Mister Chair. Uh... May, may I know when this letter was endorsed to this Sangguniyang bayan? December 12? Then on the... On the endorsement, was there? A paragraph that we will look into this matter urgently? Because, uh... We are speaking, Mister Chair. On the parcel of land. Owned by this local government unit. Uh... If it... If this is so urgent. Can we invite our municipal assessor personnel? Or the in charge, or the municipal assessor? And the municipal planning development officer? If she is available? If she is in her office right now? Para mausanan ato ni tanan?
Honorable Chair? Honorable Chair, can I speak?
Yes, honorable, uh, Chong.
And besides, honorable Chair. If that parcel of land belong to LGU. The procurement, the procure, the, the procurement of that area has proposed. Di manu palit LGU wala, wala i-proposed iba. And besides, we do not know the status of that land. Ba patagabalo. So before we donate, kinala may balatoy di status of the land, actual status. And then may add i-good sa land use. Pass the land use para may balan yun ato. So that it will be allocated. Kaya kung ihatag na to na, kihamay allocate na siya. And this land use so keep all the, all the records. Sa atong mga kuwan, sa disposal of our land nga, nga donated. So with this, honorable Chair. Except. Kung bitahon panatong kuwan, di gehapunt na kita mahuman. Kaya... Igo raman mo certipay ang, ang atong assessor's office that, that belongs to us. For the actual status of the land and the procurement ba takabalo.
That's why, Mister Chair, we call the, the, we, we also invite our municipal planning development officer. Kuna siya knowledge kabahin ani. And... Uh... I will just let the honorable Chong, uh, finish.
So it's the pleasure of the honorable Chong.
So, so in order to iron out this matter properly, properly iron, before donating it. I move that this be laid on the table for further study so that. The necessary, uh, officers can convene. And, and talk about the proposed donation, the land.
Next seconded motion.
Mister Chair?
Yes.
Just a point of order, Mister Chair. We are still on the period of discussion.
Yes.
Uh...
So any more discussion?
Aside on the matter of the parcel of land, we have also, uh... An equity, no? Naputay, part and parcel, no? So the, the... Question now is. Where do we get this? Certain amount?
As, as may certain amount? The 35 billion is... Kanaang i, i, morag ihatang na di sato.
Oh. Lagi kay, ni ngamang nga. Nganatay equity, ang ato equity is only the parcel of land ba rasa, yuta ato ah?
In the, in the form of grant. Wala wala na yunan ang, there's no. Such thing as, uh, mobile pang iju ano.
Okay, nausam mo Giniya? Sa, sa, sa imong statement sir nga. Yuta o equity.
Di man kenala ido deh, di man kenali donate nung to na. Kaya ato mana, di, di provide, di provide aras for the, for, uh, 35 billion for the construction of the building. Para sa... Para sa, sa ito.
Canos am plano matukod ni sir?
I, I, I think di kuwan. Kani agriculture, department of agriculture is the one, uh... Preparing the, the building plant. Ang, ang, ang ato is, um, dito. Ni tanletag lute for, for that project.
Jilabir me, karang kilalang.
Wala lagi mamin, cuma may isiguro will, will request. Will request sa ato mista kapalion rifi kuwan, the Mister Apau. Kani actually this MOA. I have read on this MOA, this, this.
That. Uh, he just read the MOA just this morning. So... I am with the suggestion of the honorable Chong. To...
Play this map.
To held that in abeyance, further evaluation and review.
Okay.
Uh... We'll see what will be the manifestation of the honorable Ramos. Being the proponent of that, uh, resolution. Approving the content of the MOA because he passed the resolution. because he passed the resolution with urgency.
Nagi according to Mister Apau, kung din ato... Dinerpan ng National Government?
Yes.
So ato ng, ato ni... Grant at apoy yun, apoy yun.
Yes, we understand your plight, no, nga sayang siya if di, we could not take action on this matter within this month, but nampon ko'y mga questions, clarifications, kuna dapat magmatubag, so...
Sakto mantong, ah, Mister Chair, may, may I move to kuwan, interrupt. Sakto mantong sir, ang istorya ni Sir Bab Chong na tayuta sa Don Andres, but then, kung naaman tayuta na purchase diha sa Barangay Don Andres, basi na ilahing katuyuan sa pagpurchase ni Ana, na ilahing ibutang, so maugay na atong ipatawag ang Municipal Planning, o kani bang yutaa, nga git, git panaghiyahan sa Local Government Unit, wala by pagpalit Ana, wala by plano, ang LGO sa ibutang o git palit lang na, kanaang para lang yun panaghiyahan sa LGO, basi bag na by plano ba, sumo ng ato silang kuwanan pod, akani tawagun, kaya mayroon sila libre, oh?
I am agreeable na sila, pariyon re, pero delay ko agreeable nga, i, i, kani, i delay table, kaya importante nga re, delay table, so we are, we are delaying the, the action.
Ba't na tagi tawag dito para patawag si Sir Apau pod?
Oh, si Mister Apau.
Okay, because the Honorable Ramos has requested for the presence of Honorable, ah, Mister Edgar Apau.
Yes, a while ago, ah, the presence of our Municipal Planning and Development Officer was requested, but nag lunch break pa ko na, so last do si naman.
Mag lunch puta.
So, please motion, Honorable Chair, I move for a break para panu to.
Okay, recess for thirty minutes. Thank you.
Mr. Chair.
Yes.
Seeing that the on-site protocols is not checked in this year. And the department head that we requested for is not checked around.
Okay.
So may I move for a recess, Mr. Chair, until such time they will arrive?
Or we proceed first with committee reports. We sign our committee report. We move on to the discussion.
Honorable Chair.
Yes.
On committee report. Anybody has committee report, honorable Turalba?
Thank you, Mr. Flor. Committee report number 234 of the Committee on Rules, Ordinances and Resolutions. The subject is the memorandum of agreement to be entered into by the Department of Labor and Employment, Regional Office 9, with the local government unit of APIL for government internship program. The remarks and recommendations, the committee on rules, ordinances, and resolutions to which the above subject matter was referred for review. The Department of Labor and Employment is mandated to engage the government internship program into public service by involving them in government programs, projects, and services through various partner agencies. Thus, it provides program beneficiaries, in particular to the poor or the indigent, so as to demonstrate their talents and skills in the field of public service with the ultimate objective of attracting the best and brightest for those who want to pursue a career in government service. The committee therefore find the memorandum agreement consistent and proper to its form and substance. Therefore, they... Thus recommending to allow the memorandum agreement to be entered into by the Department of Labor and Employment, Regional Office 9, represented by its regional director, Albert E. Gutib, and local government unit of APIL, represented by the honorable Anna Melce Oligario, municipal mayor for government internship program. I move, Mr. Chair, for the adoption of this committee report.
Okay, has it been moved and duly seconded? Discussion? Discussion, any objection? Hearing the motion seen by approved for the adoption of the committee report.
Mr. Chair, I move for a resolution approving the content of the memorandum of agreement to be entered into by the Department of Labor and Employment, Regional Office 9, and the local government unit of APIL. I so move and submit, Mr. Chair.
Okay, it has been moved and duly seconded by honorable Muhammad. Discussion? Any amendments, objections? Hearing the motion is here by approved.
Another resolution, Mr. Chair, giving authority to the local chief executive, the honorable Anna Melce Oligario, to enter into a memorandum of agreement with the Department of Labor and Employment, Regional Office 9, and to sign for and in behalf of the local government unit of APIL.
Any seconded motion?
Second.
Giving the authority to the local mayor, seconded by the honorable Alapin Muhammad. Discussion? Any amendments, objection? Hearing the motion is here by approved.
Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Any more?
We're still on committee report. Is there anybody else who has committee report? Please raise your hand. Since there is none, honorable chair.
Okay, Madam Secretary, for the business for the day.
For the business for the day, calendar and second reading. The first one, we have the proposed executive budget for CY 2024 of the General Fund of National Safety of APIL.
It's always the pleasure of the proponent.
Mr. Chair, I so move with the... For the approval for second reading.
Okay, there is a motion for the approval for second reading.
Of the executive budget for calendar year 2024 of this municipality.
Any seconded motion? Duly seconded by honorable Alapin Muhammad. Discussion? Any amendments, objection? Having the motion is here by approved. Third reading.
Mr. Chair, I move for the... For this matter to be set on the other matters for the third and final reading if the other members of this honorable body is amenable.
Any seconded motion? Duly seconded, discussion, any objection? Hearing the motion is here by approved.
Mr. Chair, I move for a five-minute recess.
Okay, recess for five minutes. Okay, Madam Secretary.
Under item B-3, we have the ordinance, calendar and second reading, prescribing the rules of procedure governing the investigations of administrative cases against barangay elective officials.
Mr. Chair, I so move for this ordinance, prescribing the rules of procedure governing investigation of administrative cases against barangay elective officials for second reading.
Any seconded motion? Duly seconded by honorable Muhammad. Discussion? Floor is now open for clarifications, questions, for deliberations for the said ordinance in the second reading.
Mr. Chair.
Yes, the honorable Diane Catalunya.
Yes. Mr. Chair, regarding the internal rules of procedure governing administrative cases, we already have this, the 1997, I think this is an amendment of the previous as there have been many changes, as there have been many changes over the years. So... What I want to point out on some of the proposals, number one would be the filing fee. Is the body okay with 2,000 for filing fee for complaint? No, I mean, ang mga tao ba, they come to us regarding this matter and then we give isa ka kuwan for them. It may be a hindrance regarding the filing fee. So if we can maybe lower ang atong filing fee. I mean, I'm not saying dili'ta maghahatag, no? Because there is also sa provision na if they are indigent, pwede pa sa dili't mag...
Nato diha. Nato, nato.
Kung indigent. But isa na siya sa atong i... And then another one, I want to... If we can maybe correct, regarding the receipt, upon the receipt said complaint, that we will calendar this on order of business for the next regular session. And the other one, cons... Maybe i-change ang katubitong referral, I mean seven days, no? Ang action should be seven days upon referral to the committee, not to the SB secretary. Okay, sometimes we receive ang atong referral to the committee on the next session, on the next regular session. So if i-count nato siya by when na-received a secretary, basi na-received a secretary earlier and then the committee received it later. So maybe we can correct that.
Maugun na siya.
Oo. So maugun na, ang secretary always receive the complaint ahead than the committee. So can we adjust siguro kanasya seven days prior to the referral to the committee, not to the SB secretary? And then since the committee on good government concise of five members, no? Including the chairman. So maybe ang atos ang evaluation would also be... Would also include the four members instead of the two members of the chairman... Of the committee of good government.
Mr. Chair, with a couple of recommendations, amendments of by inclusion of the honorable Diane Catalunya being the chairperson on committee on good government, may I suggest, Mr. Chair, on the next regular session, it will be shut down so we can discuss one by one on the matter presented. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Okay, thank you. So any more discussion? Any further amendments? Objection? Hearing the motion here by approved. Can we move for third and final reading on next regular session?
Mr. Chair, I move that this matter be calendared for the third and final reading on the next regular session.
Any seconded motion? Duly seconded. Discussion, any objection? Hearing the motions here by approved. That this ordinance be calendared for third and final reading on the next regular session. Okay, going back to the discussion on the resolution being presented by the honorable Sedafin Rama for the memorandum agreement to be entered into by LGE APIL and the Department of Agriculture.
Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Yes, the honorable Sedafin Rama.
Just a few minutes, I went to the office of the planning, what's called planning office. Matikpa ni Mam Nimpah, that area. Let's go balin to two hectares. Kana gi potato des mercado to wheat market. Yeah, portion na na, diya butang kala. Kala, robust project sa kadiwa. So ako din toyar, that hectares portion is titled, titled "The Perfect Day", previously donated by the Arbisim. It's very empty but it is here. So title das ya, nga atong municipal agriculture is on field, towards a pangay. Nagbesita to project po, livestock. Livestock, sila, sitir nato diya, pangay. So niya mani yang staff, in the person of Mr. Meos. I think Mr. Meos can see light. Asan portion na dia sa two hectares portion to mercado. He patayo kala ng kadiwa. Kadiwa, post to kadiwa sitir. May I move to allow Mr. Meos to speak before this buddy? Mr. Meos.
Okay, can we move for the special?
Hello, to our vice mayor, Vice Mongolterio.
Before Mr. Chair, before our resource speaker will speak, may I request Mr. Chair to move his hat?
Okay, go ahead, Mr. Meos.
Once again, good afternoon to our SB members and our municipal vice mayor. Once again, I'm Darrel T. Meos, a features technician of municipal agriculture office representing our municipal agriculture, Sir Edgar Appau. So the Kadiwa project of the Department of Agriculture will be established or constructed, construct in somewhere in... Don Andres, katubitong bagsakan center dati vice mayor nga, parang abandon na siya magkaroon. So dito siya ibutang approximately around 162 square meters, nine by eighteen ang ihang dimension. And this project also has a fish trading substation which will be established in Barangay Magdaop, Purokrikodo with a dimension of six by seven square meter. And the total budget for this said project is 3.5 million. And I think that would be all. Ang atuang fish trading post, sir, will be used as a consolidation facility wherein our fish traders, our fisher folk can deliver or can land their fishery products. For example, those fishery products coming from other municipalities or regions, let's say Zamanga City, Vitale or Pan Norte, pwede nila i-direct handos, kumbaga dito sa atuang fish trading post. Kung atuang mga fisher folk who wish to sell or trade their products at our APIL public market, at least they have a centralized area wherein they can sell or trade their fishery products. Somehow, parang bagsakan.
Mora mga sa metra.
Kailan man iito po sa po, man iattack, they would might be the word. So that will be the bagsakan.
Mike, Mike.
So that will be the bagsakan center. The purpose is bagsakan center, no? So my question is, what will happen to our existing bagsakan center?
Based on what I know, sir, I think the building that is being used now is, I think, temporary bagsakan center because the previous bagsakan center is already damaged or di na siya suitable for that particular activity. So ang ginagamit karoon is katung temporary na multipurpose covered court sa likod. Kaya dito po ginakandak ang atong tabo, kung if I matrus taken. So dito naibalik na nato siya katung sa atuang previous na bagsakan.
Okay, so for clarification, for the construction.
According to your purpose, the purpose there is aid to the fisher folk, no?
Yes, sir.
Aid to the fisher folk. Akong pangutan na, how could this building aid the fisher folk? Unsa himaya makuha sa fisher folk ano building, fisher folk of APIL?
Naasila at is... naasilay, kwan, sir, mahandusan silang isda at fisher folk friendly price because I think there will be an ordinance to support this, the implementation of this project. So I think parang ibutang po dito ang regulations sa kuwan and also at least centralize ang ilahang butanganan or ilahang baligyanan. Dili sila scattered ang atuang naatay government na employee na maassign dito to monitor closely ang mga activities dito, sir.
Accordingly, bagsakan center, diha ihulog tanan isda, gican sila in municipyo, diba?
Yes, sir.
The center. So that purpose is to aid the APIL fisher folk, ang gamit, no? Aid to the APIL fisher folk. Akong pangutan na, libre ang APIL fisher folk land dito o nagyapo sila bayad?
Ah, pukok katubag na karoon, sir, since wala pa man putay details bangsana to implement and maybe the details about the implementation of this said project will be detailed in the municipal ordinance which will be crafted by the Mao and the FPO.
Sir, pwede ko mangutan na?
Yes, ma'am.
My concern is really the area. Do you have an initial conference with the municipal planning and the assessor with that program?
I don't know, ma'am, if nag-storya na si Sir Edgar and si Mam MPDC, si Mam Nimpah regarding the said project. Pero ang akong nahibalan lang is, di aran nato ibutang atong project.
Kinsay nag-ingon diha, sir?
Si Sir Edgar. Sir Edgar Appau ang nag-sinstruction dun sa kuwan.
Naanaba initial nga conference po o meeting with the media manager?
Ah, last time, nakaha initial o storya si... I don't know if initial or nag-storyhan na yun sila or detail to detail about iniya na pero sa kumpagkahibal ang nag-storya na si Sir Edgar and si Sir Sumatra regarding that matter.
Okay, kay si Sir Boyat Sumatra, ang iyang concern is the operation of the market. Pero so as to the ganing area, monang ang planning ang atung tanawon kay unsa, unsa pila ang plano para dihang ng area. So ang imong presensya karoon, dako kaayog ikahatag nga kabugatun kay maskin ikaw, wala ka kabalo, no?
Yes, sir.
Wala po ka kabalo. So mas maainta to, kunayun si Sir Appau, punsa ganyan ilang conversation, no? Prior sa pag-plaster aning mowa sa agri. Nanakuyga may inquiry, sir. Is this an urgent program? Kung dili't matagaan o pagtagad karoon dili na maato ang maong programa di na mahatag sa tuwa o pwede ba sunod tuig na to pasahan eh, unsa ba?
Ah, base sa kuwan, ma'am, sa DA, always may nila gina-rush. For example, na 'yung mga documents na ipa-kuwan.
Always mo gina-rush?
Ginapakumplay nila sa mowa kay mabalaka sila, kay baka mawala doon.
Kano saan ang program, sir, naabot sa inyo, ha?
Actually, ma'am, kani siya nga project, nag sugod at ano siya wayback December of 2021 or first quarter of 2022. Pero tungod sa... Pero tungod sa kuwan, mga kay sila sa DED, POW, daghan kay sila ganyan balik-balik. And also, maragid na nga ganang maputo nila ang giallocate ng kwarta sa tua from 2. something, 2.7 or 2.9. Ihimon nilang 3.5 million.
Oo, kano sana, kano sana luwag gan, sir?
Ah, last, ah, just this year, ma'am, ingon to si ilahang.
Ah, mga first quarter, second quarter?
Second quarter.
Second quarter.
So, mo to siya, dilim po ko kabalo kung urgent siya, pero base sa ilahang, paunsa sila mag-asa muhang kuwan ang cooperation. Maragin, gina-gusto nila na ma-implemento dahil or at least mahatag sa atuang kwarta para masugdan na din ito.
Ah, kay, now forward, the program was endorsed from the Office of the Municipal Mayor for us to approve the memorandum of agreement, no? To be entered between the LGO and the Department of Agriculture. So, earlier, I asked our secretary if when did that endorsement arrive at our office? It was just last day, yesterday?
Yesterday.
Yesterday. So, do you think in ano kapaswas ang sangguniyang bayan? Pag mag-request ang Department of Agriculture or the Municipal Agriculture Office mag-request for the urgency, so as to urgent, diha ba dahil? Wala ba time ang sangguniyang bayan to review the plans, unsa ba? O kinalan pa pasahan dahil? Because the Honorable Ramos, being the Chairperson on the Committee on Agriculture, a pass emotion for urgency. So, nadugay ni karoon nag-breakta tungod kay... We've been waiting for the Municipal Planning Officer, Municipal Assessor's Office and your office, the Municipal Agriculture's Office, to shed light on this matter kay yuta manggut ang atuang gi-planuhan nga asa ibutang. So, we requested the presence of the Municipal Planning. Kay once maturok na na siya diha, monang dito dito sa ilang advice, gikan base na na 'yung mga plano ba prior, aning mga programs nga naabot sa tua. So, mauna ang amo ang, ang amo katuyuan dito. Kay wala na ni girefer of committee, idiretso na ni siya. So, ah, we are just so concerned on the area, kana ra dito. Kay that's a market premises, no? Market premises. So, ang unsa mga plastered sa programa diha, wala na siya'y ma-plaster na to na nga ma-plaster, pero was mairek na na siya diha. So, we need also the advice of our Municipal Planning. That's all, Mr. Chair.
Okay, Mr. Floor Leader.
Ah, second, Mr. Chair, for consideration, we have here our personnel from the Municipal Assessor's Office. Kay gipangutan na na ako siya earlier, asa dapit. Kay siyempre sila kinalan po, kwan po, advicean po, sir, kunasa po dapat ibutang po ng building. Wala mo po do sila kabalo.
Okay, so what's the pressure of the Floor Leader?
Okay, that area is two hectares. And what we need is only one and a half, 150 square meter. Asa dapit sa 20,000 square meter, dapit ibutang ang 150 meters. So, I think everything must be ironed out.
Yes.
For the, for the information of everyone, ganing hectares atong gina-storyahan monang ni atong mercado, atong public market. So, asa dapit, kinatibok ang public market na to.
I understand, katung, kantung fish landing na to, sano to, naikahoy, gani nga kuwan? I think mauna siya?
Yes, yes, Vice Mayor.
Katung gi-demolish ng fish landing area. Okay, so what's the pressure, Mr. Floor? Since marag daghan pa kayong.
Paminin, natunin mo vice, namrog maoto.
O, di, matashur tanan.
Ma, gani.
So, Ms. Mr. Floor, what's the pressure?
To the assessor.
Okay, assessor. Okay, thank you, Mr. Mios.
Ah, may nga po sa tanan, no, sir, ma'am. Actually, ano, wadiko kabalo, ano, dito si Sir Edgar, si Sir Serapin, bayan aning, kani project daw sa kuwan sa agriculture. Maoto nag-certify through copy sa tax date, akong gata ni Sir Serapin. Then, wadiko kabalo po na, ano, kunasa dapit ipukod. Ugo unsa, ni, basta ako agan na, nagatag, moton, isman ni Mam Pati, bayan na ni Kumangkat, wadiko kabalo, ah, po dahil na ipukod.
Hello, hello. Sir, sir, yes. Ah, ang number one, gimbikabalo, si Mister Appau. Pero ako, I am certain nga, ang area, digo, wag, digo na inanang mitabo nga mugawa sa two hectares na sa market. It is within.
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 Within sa two.
Unes sigurado.
Twenty thousand one square meters, 2.001 square hectares. Adi is a mugawa.
Okay.
American with market katung nasuno, canang sa.
Honorable Chair.
Yes.
I've already heard the discussion. And I think it is still have done. So, with this, Honorable Chair, I, I move to deeper the approval of this until next session.
Mr. Chair, I, I object.
Point of order, Mr. Chair, we are still on the period of discussion.
Discussion.
We did not yet dismiss our visitor.
Okay.
Ah, we will just dismiss our visitor, then we will back to other because we're, our rules suspended.
Okay, are you through with, uh, Mr. Alarm?
I think we'll request Mr. Mios, padali on, gari si Mister Appau, gari. Kay madugay du guys, ya?
Mr. Chair, point of order.
Okay.
We are discussing with our Assessor's personnel, Mr. Chair. Uh, Mr. Mios is already through.
Okay, Mr. Alarm, okay, napai-question ka, Mr. Alarm, lana. Okay, thank you, Mr. Alarm.
Thank you, sir.
Napamay next session, sir? Okay, going back to discussion period. Any more discussion? Clarification? Yes, second reading, saya mohon.
While waiting for... Mr. Chair, I want to hear that correctly. We will skip the discussion of, on this.
Yes, that's the plight of General Ramos, while waiting for Mr. Appau. Okay, Madam Secretary. For business for the day, for second reading. Living livestock.
Okay, under business for the day, calendered on second reading, we have item B, dash two, an ordinance establishing a livestock auction center as LGA's marketing support and stabilize the supply of livestock for Slouter House of Ipil is sponsored by the Honorable Ramos.
What's the pressure of the proponent?
That supposed to be all, that supposed ordinance. Gusto na pong i-differ na, kaysa alin niya karoon.
Okay.
Kay kala maka, maka hulat na na siya.
Okay. What's your pleasure? Let this ordinance be calendered for secondary, next regular session?
Next regular session.
Okay. Other matters?
For clarification, Mr. Chair.
Yes.
May I ask the proponent on why this will be deferred?
Okay, General Ramos, may you answer the query of General Turalba?
Joto de urgency, inimpinding kuwan na to karoon, monang gusto na ko kakilalan ma. Makonin ma. May mo ma-prob na niya karoon. Kay kung dilim na niya ma-prob for next regular session. We are basing. Mabritikin pagyapong kay next regular session, we'll be discussing about the, about our budget.
We are on the, Mr. Chair. We are on the second reading of this.
For third reading na, sir, other matters?
Livestock Auction Center, for second reading discussion. It's just a simple inquiry, Mr. Chair, on why this will be deferred?
Okay, so kindly answer the query of the Honorable Turalba. The reasons why this matter.
While, while waiting for Mr. Appau, I think we can, we can take this up now. So, I move for the approval of this proposal. Ordinance.
Okay. Any second to motion for second reading? But the query of General Turalba was not answered.
Answered?
The query of General Turalba was for you to give the reason on deferring this matter.
Mr. Chair.
Yes.
This humble representation is not in a hurry on approving this for secondary day. The, my simple inquiry is why the proponent defer this matter for second reading?
Okay, that was the query. Again, for the third time.
I, I suppose to, to study further the proposed ordinance considering that the location is a, a, funny. Anya, ang area is, ah... owned by the barangay.
There was already memorandum, ah... Unsa, unsa kulang, sir, nga nong atong i-defer ang approval aning, kwan, sir, livestock auction center.
Ah, gusto na ko nga... Gusto na ko nga ang commitment sa barangay officials.
Amendment sa unsa, sir?
Commitment.
Ah, commitment sa? Commitment of who, sir?
Commitment of the barangay officials nga, ang, ang, di, di one who... mo, kuwan pa superisong di project ba? Kay this, ah, project is a... This project is a... Kinala mo kung in, in condition with the barangay official. Kay gani ang sharing system dito. The sharing system is sixty percent sa due and only forty percent sa barangay. And there was comment, nga, why, 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 why we should, ah... consider or amend this in, ah, proposal instead of forty percent sa barangay? It should be sixty percent and twenty percent, ah, forty percent to be, eh, due, eh, due even. So, gusto na ko nga ma, ma kuwan ba?
Estuduhan.
Ma, ma klaro.
In what form, ah, do the commitment of the barangay falls? Sa asa dapit ma-fall ang ilang commitments, sir, was not in the mowa?
The, that, that depends in my, in my interview, when, when... Because I, I plan to, to visit barangay, siguro, tomorrow. Para ma klaro ano ko ba, kalisur pa kayan mo. I am the one, the, actually, the one who propose, may, may the proposal is the, the agriculture?
Yes, sir, of course, it's the Office of the Municipal Agriculture.
I, I am the one, I am.
Yeah.
Sponsoring this.
Yeah. So, being the Chairperson on the Committee on Agriculture, ah, ikaw na dito, upon presentation before the sangguniyang bayan of all the resolutions and ordinances, it is now the Chairperson on, on the Committee on Agriculture, maoini ako sa maong ordinance sa. So, when it was presented, then it was referred, then the memorandum of agreement was already approved. So, that's why the, oh, that's why Mr. Edgar Appau sent a letter addressed to this humble representation, being the Chairperson on the Committee on Market, I own rules, so as to proceed with the, ah, ordinance for second reading because the mowa was already approved on, ah, August, for the, ah, sometime August. No, pag approve sa mowa, ato tong gi-biyaan kadiot, it was deferred, so atong gi-move for second reading. So, this, this was already deferred last regular session, Mr. Chair. And if this be deferred again for this, ah, another deferment for the approval of this for second reading, ah, hinoo na pa man sunod Wednesday. So, simple na to akong inquiry, Sir Seraphin, nga nong atong i-defer, if we can approve this? If you can introduce some amendment, ah, on the next regular session or some other days, so pwede na to ma-amend, no? By addition or incorporation of that proposal. So, morotong pangutan na, Honorable Chair, why we, why the proponent of this particular, ah, ordinance move for the deferment?
So... Were you satisfied with the answers of the said, of the proponent?
With that, Mr. Chair, I move that it, ah, it will be put on record the, ah, the motion of the Honorable Ramos for the deferment of this particular, ah, ordinance.
Okay. So, again, let this ordinance be calendered for second reading at the next regular session. Other matters? Please connect, basa na lang, then photo of stuff.
Other matters, Vice, karong Christmas party mag-unseta.
Canida, white, og pink.
Ah, dilim, basa tong foodery, ah, in the event na ang family, panalitan ba? Kay naman 2,000 ticket daw, nag 2,000 ticket.
Honorable Chair.
Okay, okay, yes.
I think there's, there is emotion previously moved by the Honorable Turalba that the, that the, that the, that our municipal budget for 2024 be was calendered for the third reading on other matters.
Yes. Monang sat na to tong budget, okay? For those who are in favor, for the approval of the executive budget, before kindly raise your right hand and say aye. Aye, 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 okay, all are in favor of said ordinance? So... Are you in favor for the approval?
Of the 2024 budget.
2024, third reading. Okay, aye, okay, all are in favor? So, this, yes, both have it, this ordinance is hereby approved for third and final reading. Yes, the next concern is for the Christmas party? Ah, siguro, if gusto ang kuwan, if napatay, maka prepare tagoon na to, ring a food?
Ano pang naatay? Tanang, upright visitabang, ngandita mga balunaabot.
Bitam, si pwede pa to maka hangyo de. Kamay lang dun. Gamay lang dun? Gamay lang? Yes, yes. Isa gamay lang? Tal na may...
Anla, doc, imong mata doc, wala na kaayos eh.
Ah, allergy? Oh, sige, before that, ato sa ning kuwanan na, ato ang plaque. Okay, rule suspended.
Again, EPL, oh, ato lang kuwan, i-congratulate atong kagalingon. Again, EPL was, uh... Awarded as the finalist for the National LLA, representing Region Nine. So naadri ang ato ang plaque, nagka-dugay, nagkagamay. And this is the content. As a national finalist in the one... The first to third class municipality category of the 2023 Local Legislative Board in recognition of its significant accomplishments in local legislation that contributed to the attainment of desirable socioeconomic and environmental outcomes that benefited the community and enhance the development of the local government unit. Uh, this was given on the 5th day of December dito sa World Trade Center Pasay City. So we will congratulate ourselves.
Picture ta? Picture ta ka dito?
Fuwan ang daugte, bigal gapon.
San Mariano, San Mariano, Isabella. Resess for two minutes. Okay, so with regards to the concern of the Honorable Turalba para tabahin sa Christmas party, kami pangutana, if mapatay pwedeng kamayng food ma-prepare?
May hapon sa tanan. Kung sa pagkaon, sir, niingon na tong provider nga. Dako, dako na ato ang nautang, pero ako naman tong ipromisan nga at pwede na pong bayaran next year pohon, kaya dako, dako naman na tong budget, baka mga cover up na. Masugot ra siguro ta sa atong hangyoon. Para lang man kaisa to sa legislative.
For update, dili siya iingon nga para sa tuwan tanan, kaya namay food nga grip, i-prepare. So bisag, para sa bisita lang diba, mura gamay, gamay lang, nga preparation.
Ah, sige sir, oo.
Quinta katao?
Sige sir, paniha, oh, panihapon, naghihapon, sir. Kasi katulang mga dry, dry nga pagkaon. Ato hangyoon, naghihapon ako sa akin, nagpaluap ko sila, ang papel kay naningil na sila roon.
Oh, hangyoon lang dun? Balibad ra may kontra na?
Modyot, sir. Pero nagcompromise mo nga, sige lang, makabayad na lagi may next year, niingon na po niya, sige ra, okay ra daw.
Sige, sige.
Kaya ako lang yung kuwan, sir, di kita kabalin pagprovider, kaya utangan man gunta.
Di ta mamalhin?
One ta lang sa ta, sir.
Okay lang, ako na pagkaon.
Sige sir, oo, korang hangyoon, sir, sikoan, taylang manager.
Okay, thank you.
Sige sir.
Hapa? Other matters? Other concerns?
Other matters? Basig na pa itong...
Resess tabi? Two minutes? Hindi na to pwede ma... Panor resess lang. Unsa to te? Sige te?
Here is a... Okay, let's go back with the discussion of the, uh...
Mr. Chair, I move for the suspension of the rules. Commodate, uh, Mr. Edgar Apo. Sir Ed, pwede ka mapursin sa roster?
Good afternoon, everybody, no? Sa tuwang mga honorable members of this, uh... Sangguyang Bayan. I'm sorry, abila ko kontinto na sa explanation sa representative, kaya mo raw ma-maora ma-sabaw mo ang explanation, good. Ay, dun ako igi, arti man yung trabaho dito sa Livestock Auction Center na to.
Okay, sir.
Uh...
Okay, sir.
Unsa pangutana man di ayat to?
Sir, ang pangutana diri, you're asking for the approval of the Mowa, no? Only ang approval good ani oh, ug-tanant to na-nasa request ni Honorable Ramos sa iyong motion na sayod menta nga before the approval of any Mowa, there should be the program sa nauna so that any question will be answered by the program by the program of course, no?
Oo.
Uh, so among pangutana karun ba, by in sa program of course, na ano ba?
Ang program, actually this, uh, this project was proposed three years ago. Pag lingkod ni, uh... Sa panahon pa rin ni bunggo ang unan niya nga pakulok dire sa tuwang, daghang kadugan-dugan yung ato ang mga projects diri. Only ang halangan lang tungkol sa POW sa DID uh... Detailed Engineering Estimate of POW. Kapila, balik-balik ang POW kay dunin mga corrections yung standards the standards of the Department of Agriculture Engineering Division ma-argui ipa ipa tuman. Only, listen, tumanun kay nakabasi sila sa World Bank nga standards. Nagbalik-balik na sa huntun, kaya naabot na og three years niya, ayak pa karun nga. Uh... Kini na lang ang resolution sa ISB ang gihulat karong simanaha. Oh, kay kay halangan bitonis ya karikuan. Ah, kanang na, na-delay demander, ibalik na po dila ang kwartas Manila, kung delay na to ni si Masikaso karong simanaha.
Sir, may have the floor, sir, uh, Vice?
Okay, so, General Turalba?
Sir, karonyo si manahon na kinala?
Yes, yes.
Then, kung karong si manahon na kinala ang resolution nga nong wala manato ni ma... 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 uh... passa, ma-indorse last, last week, dinhe sa Sangguyang Bayan?
Last week, the same day, Wednesday, naabot niya muwasa mong kamot. Pagkain na ko dinhe, pagkain ko ni Consulhal Ramos na humana ang sesyon. Iko nga, Consulhal pwede ka na to ng masingit dito as part of the agindum agenda? As one agindum dito arun nga ma... Ma insert na lang ba? Isaga, wala na pa tay insertion, ato ang ginas yang na-adapt sa ISB nga wala insertion, na late na. A matter of two to three hours lang, ikan sa pagka-sesyon, nanganaw ka ang ISB mo, ipakabutan iikan sa Department of Agriculture.
Okay, sir, given na ano na mga programs? Ang among concern kay within sa two hectares diha sa tuang, uh... Yuta, diha sa mercado, itukod ng maonga building?
Oh, actually kalisay itukod diha sa tinukura na daan kala, kala bitong bagsakan na daan diha og isda mga, mga ayser diha maghonong katong ginaoccupy nilang Consulhal Salina sa una kala siyang area.
Diha sa temporary bagsakan na to?
Oo.
Sumahi mo siyang permanent bagsakan?
Yes, cons, oh.
Uh... Ang ako lang gustong, uh, ma-iinquire sa imong level, sa inyong level, sa agriculture na ano may conference or meetings na hitaw with the municipal planning? Ani?
Wala pa yet so far, uh... Wala pa may, wala pa may talistorian na pro sa Mido na lang may mga, uh, special, uh, na lang may mga initial nga talks kay kini siya to be implemented by the Mido, mukolinit trame, mukopere trame sa Mido. Eh, karun, layo kaito ilang bagsakan, nawala na kaya na, hugno naman ko na dihanapita.
Oh lagi, uh... Ato man ginaconsider, sir, nga, uh, mga new development para sa tuang public market, inaano nga mga, nga mga programs? Pero, uh, we situate nga in place tanan, no? Because we will be constructing a building of which we look at it as permanent building no, for the local government unit. Pasalamat, tanan. Ang atong isa lang ka-concern uh, ma-otong among ipangutana, ang imong staff yung ganey... Your staff, it is on the side of two hectares. It is covered now. At least, we have moved it, sir. It is temporary, it is a temporary building.
Yes, it is. It is on the side of public market.
It is because, when it is constructed, it is permanent. So, it is important to talk about it. Are you aware of municipal planning? Because, of all the constructions pertaining to buildings, these are all in Ipil, especially when it will be constructed under the name of the local government unit, we see it as placed. Even if the municipal engineering is placed. That is what is concerned. That was not exactly explained by the proponent of that motion, Mr. Ramos. You have to explain more to the latter.
Okay, we are very sorry, and we stand corrected for not meeting with them. But, we saw the need. When we leave, we don't want to leave. We don't want to leave the functional. We can't park it. It is proposed, we don't want to delay. It is a budget of 3.5 million. Actually, originally, it was 3 million. We have talked about it for three years. It is over. We only have 500,000. We have to move it to the prices. And, we saw... We assume, we don't want to... It is important to talk about it. We don't want to hear the criticism. When you move it, it is planned. We have not occupied. We don't want to occupy the office. Although, we don't have official clearance, we have to go to MPDO. But, I just want to say. I want to say, for you to understand. If we delete, we don't want to discuss it.
Sir, sir, in short, can you share, before the Sanguinang Bayan, a little rationale of that program? It is important to talk about it. We don't want to talk about it. It is important to talk about it. At least, you are aware of it.
A barn is a barn. It is either coming from the municipality of Ipil and from other municipalities. From Ipil, 75% is fish sufficiency level. 75%, that means 25%, for example, if we are farming, we have 50% of our needs for importation of fish from Samoga City and Samoga del Norte. So, it is important to leave the area, the vine, the barns. Because, they monitor the pricing system. They are trying to make the price. They are trying to cut it. It is important to know, it is on the municipality, the meeting, agriculture. They are trying to make the price higher. They are trying to increase the price. They are trying to... They are trying to move it to Ipil. They are trying to move it to Central Mindanao. They are trying to move it to Northern Mindanao. Specifically, in Bukit Nun. So, if we delete, it is clear. They are trying to increase the price. They are trying to make the price higher. They are trying to negotiate. The main purpose is to stabilize the price. For example, if the barns are farming, we support it to move it to fish ponds, areas, for example, the barns. In short, it is Tuang barns. If we move it to Tuang, there is a gap. The gap, we have to cut it. We have to cut it to make it profitable. Fish production, we can make it profitable. So, it is important to talk about it. It is important to talk about it. Distribute for redistribution or retailing for retailers in the market. We have to stabilize the price. We have to stabilize the Tuang stock.
It is important, sir, restrictions for moving the barns.
Yes, yes.
Okay. Is it important to talk about the system or policy? We don't want to talk about it. We don't want to talk about the barns. Do you want to talk about it?
Ah... Mr. Ramos, if we establish it, we have to... We have to... We have to... We have to... Mr. Ramos, we have to say, we have to say, we are coordinating to implement a strategy. Right now, we have to move it. We have to move it to the side. We don't want to talk about it. We have to move it. It is important to talk about it. It is important to talk about it. Then, Mr. Ramos has to handle and advise the guidelines for operating.
What is concerned, sir, with the presence of your staff, it is important to have the presence at MPDC. Yes, at MPDC. Because, it is not possible to move it if you have planned it. Assign the program that your staff have presented. So, thank you for your advice. Thank you for your advice. I still have to move it. I still have to move it. You enlightened me with your explanation. It is not possible to explain. No? With profound explanation, your staff, Mr. Ramos, it is you who is explaining. So, I have to move it.
Okay, okay. Rest assured, we are coordinating with the government once. We have to move it to the region. 3.5, download now. Now, the resolution. Because of POW.
It is important to talk about it. Three years ago, we had a program.
Oh, it is back and forth.
Oh, when I was young, the letter request endorsed, we have to move it. We have to approve it. It is important to talk about it. I told you, sir. The usual process. Once it is moved, it will really be referred to a particular committee. So, right now, a motion for urgency, Mr. Ramos. So, when we plan, we have to defer on the move. We object, Mr. Ramos. So... I told you, I told you. We waited for you, to at least wait a while. It is a reasonable reason. Ah, Mr. Chair, can we request just... Ah... I told you, just a minute, Madam Nympha. To... 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 Before we approve, Mr. Chair, the move.
Mr. Chair, may I?
Go ahead.
Sir, may I?
Go ahead.
Sir, can you clarify about the 20% equity?
Okay. I have a project, I have a... I have a friendly idea. I have a... I have a... I have a... Just give us the equity. Whether it is kind or in kind. Whether it is cash or in kind. Whether it is cash or in kind. So, even the area, the land, millions. Millions of value is on the address. It is important to talk about it. It is 9 million. Nine hundred. Nine hundred thousand. It is important to talk about it. 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 Competition. Nine hundred thousand. But, I don't want to talk about it. In kind, it is important to put up for the counterpart.
Sir, and the purpose of the projects is the fisher box, am I right?
Yes, yes. Fisher box and other...
I have to talk about it. Since it will be used as an economic enterprise, it is all in Ipil. Therefore, your barns will be collecting fish from different areas. What is the benefit of the fisher box in Ipil?
Maybe, if I don't want to plaster it or coordinating, but my plan is, some of the collections, we have to take it. It is maybe to move it for fishery development programs. The assistance, it is... Right now, it is... Ah... 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 It is a problem. It is expensive to buy nylon and nets. Maybe, we have to subsidize for the fishing, for the penalias. It is... Oh... It is expensive to buy... If you will subsidize, you can take it out of the income. If you have to take it. We don't want to talk about it. But, we don't want to talk about it. We don't want to talk about it.
You can put free fish in the fisher box in Ipil. Free fish. You can put, maybe.
Oh, you can put.
Okay, okay.
You can put. Say again, it is important to talk about it.
Okay. Any more? Clarification?
Thank you, cons.
Hello. I have a suggestion. Suggestion, please. Move it. If you have a little bit of kilometers. Here, yeah. Purpose of the project. So, maybe, if the purpose resolution is plastic. You want to leave it?
It is POW, it is Tuang dimension.
Yeah, it is.
Oh, okay. It is important to apply it. I will advise it.
Okay, discussion?
One last, sir. Regarding in terms of operation, to make it organized, deleted some parts. They mentioned about... They said, "It is from the middle."
From the middle, it is among the offices. But, most of the people, it is from the middle. It is an economic enterprise.
And you coordinated with, sir?
Yes, we have an initial coordinate. Coordinate. Coordinate talk. But, we plaster it in the ordinance. So, we have to talk about it. Mr. Ramos, we have to talk about it. It is a role, it is a responsibility.
Okay, so, thank you, sir.
Okay, thank you, sir. Thank you for your support. I know you are very supportive to our agriculture and fishery projects. And, for example, the farm, the plan. For the problems of the vine, more than the marketing aspects, Tuang agriculture and fishery products. We have to talk about it. Maybe, the production, we have to talk about it. It is important to move it or assemble the products. We create it. Where to assemble? And one of the venues where we can assemble is the barn or the trading post. Right now, it is important to talk about it. Thank you very much, and good afternoon.
Thank you.
Mr. Chair, our MPDO is already present.
Okay. Engineer Dipotado, you are recognized.
Can we recognize our MPDO, sir?
Honorable Chair?
Yes.
Okay, go ahead.
Engineer, Mayong Hapon.
Ah, yes, ma'am.
Mayong Hapon. We called your presence this afternoon in regard to the programs of the Municipal Agriculture Office. We have to talk about it. We have to talk about it. Ma'am, engineers, to approve the memorandum of agreement with the DA, Regional Office. Ah... We want to inquire about the move, ma'am. Ah... Have you moved to your office concerning agriculture pertaining ah... to construct the Osaka building for the barns in Mercado?
Good afternoon to this august body. So, to note, ma'am, that I am not aware of that project. I was just informed by Honorable Ramos.
Earlier?
Earlier, ma'am, regarding that.
Because, it is... Ah... I have to talk about it, ma'am. Before we will... Before the Sanguinang Bayan will approve that particular move, ah... I want everything to be polished. Aware of MPDC. Aware of the assessor. If the perimeter, it is two hectares, the side, is covered by construction. So, we called your attention. It is because you are the planning officer of this municipality. I have a question, sir Apaw. When it is temporary barns, it is a barn in Mercado. It is constructed. So, it is much better to move it. So, we have to move it if we have to move it if we have to move it to the construction. Because, I would reiterate, you have to move it as a permanent building in Tuang Local Government. So, it is important to move it. Because, it is planned. Your move, your move also influenced the construction. Because, the plan is contrasted. That is what is concerned, ma'am. So far, there is no problem?
Ah, there is no, ma'am. Per information coming from the mall, just this moment, accordingly, they would be using the Katung Gem project before, which is identified as our fish landing. So, for now, it is not being used as fish landing. It should be functional, actually. So, I think it is commendable on the part of the agriculture to use it, so that we can maximize its, the area.
Katung Gem project, the move between them and the LGU?
Ah, we have a move with that. But, I have to move it in the papers. Because, that was a long time ago. It is a project, ma'am. But, anyway, the gem is very particular for its maintenance within ten years. But, as far as I am concerned, it is already beyond ten years of its existence in fish landing. In fact, it is not used actually for the purpose.
Was that program of the gem between the gem and the one in the LGU, was not a part and parcel of the inventory of the Koa? There is no? There is a noise?
As far, ma'am, I have to move it in the inventory.
Because, I have to move it to a list.
Because, I can only remember once the maintenance should be...
But, there is no?
There is no, sir. There is no, ma'am.
So, insofar, in your level as MPDO, okay, this?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. 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 I want to move it. It is like now. This is Mr. Ramos, the move. This is my move. Because, it is my move. You have to move it to the move. So, I apologize, ma'am. I have to move it. 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 Just to enlighten you. Just to make it possible. So, at least, it is our intention, ma'am. To place it, to polish it for the building, for the agriculture, at least. Plus, data.
Okay.
Ah... Thank you very much, ma'am, Mr. Chair. Unless the other members of this honorable chamber help some inquiries to Sir Apaw, particularly, ma'am, Engineer Nympha, before they leave.
Okay. Any more clarification? Ma'am, engineer, thank you. So, any more discussion? The approval of the memorandum of agreement?
Last question, honorable, to Mr. Apaw.
Okay.
If in case, how many buildings?
If in case, how many buildings?
There is a move, this, one year. One year.
I have to move it to the building, you have to move it.
Okay, so, any more question?
Ah... Mr. Chair, aside from those responsibilities of the local government, because, what, sir? Sir, Seraphine, is there any categorized responsibilities in the local government? I have to move it, sir. While, sir Apaw or Engineer Nympha?
I think we will request...
Just the technical aspect. Duties and responsibilities, sir Apaw? LGU?
Duties and responsibilities...
Can I request, Mr. Chair, LGU? When Mr. Ramos is here, you have to move it.
There are 22. Duties and responsibilities of LGU. Ah, I think it is the SB. It has been provided with copies. If not, I will request the secretary to read this. These are duties.
Katung, you have to move it, sir. Katung, the moves, moves, it is important. But, if... Katung diha kay bugat sir, ah, katung mga bugat bugat ah, human namanta, pero kung, kana okay na?
Ang mido bugat bugat dire, ah, kaya kayong i-comply, kani provide for space land area.
Okay na.
For the construction. For kadiwa program. Dayon, number four, provide equity and up to that cost, in cash or in kind, per kuwa circular number 2,007,001, dih tober 25,007. Okay, twenty percent equity, it can be ah, katunggingo na kong nga.
Monato yon ta.
Ang kani land area na to, it's more, more than the twenty percent ah.
Okay.
Okay, okay sir.
More than twenty percent.
Aside from that sir, wala na, okay na? Ginagay na?
Mo i-Kwan. Pinaka, important takeo. So, number four, identify recommended and assess the intended beneficiaries in implementation sa bi kadiwa program.
Sir, the as a section seven sir. Ah, pila ka beneficiaries, ang, ang maka avail anak?
I think our municipal agriculture is can answer that question kung pila ka beneficiaries. So siguro, Mr. Apaw to answer the query, honorable, ah, Toralma.
Sir, can we use the chat? Because we are.
We have, in our record, we have more than 4,000 ah fisher fox. Og among i-assume nga, kung diha sila ma-market then mabeneficiares sila, dona po'y mga revenue, nga maincome na to, makuha na to dinha then maka hatag taog, maka gamit taog ah funds from that collected amount, ibalik sila ha, ma, makakuha sila benefits. Gawas anapod ang ato ang mga, mga retailers, makakuha sila benefit kay sigurado na ilang presyo nga, wala na sila binuangan, pati ang ilang timbangan ato pong i-monitor. Ano siya, so, correct wing system, correct pricing, og ah, ang price na to, na monitor na to. Ah, bisan pa og, dunai implement weather condition nga may maka fix sa supply sa fishes na to. Ah, di ka ina siya mo usap, usap ang ato ang presyo, di ka mo fluctuate because of that project. One ngang benefits nga ako nakita nga, pinaka.
Okay.
Andalira.
Okay sir, sir, mubalik lang kogamay, diha sa maong building ah, puhon matukod man na, bale ang kwan ano operation ano, ah, duha agriculture ug ang mido?
Mido, ah, mido yon na siya.
Mido.
Ma-assist lagi minila teknikal eh.
Ah, ma-assist mo.
Oo.
So, kung naaimo assist nga personally mo, ah, detailed siya nga personal?
It may be detailed or not kay dilim on kami may manage ang, ang mido man. Pero finalizer na to unyang sa, sa Kwan, sa guideline unyang nga idraft sa tuang SB.
Anay mga internal policies, ano nga idraft.
Okay.
So, ato lang sir, ang akong inquiry.
Ano more clarification?
So Mister Chair?
Yes.
I think there, there, there are no more questions on the part of the sangunyang bayan members.
Yes.
So, I move to pass a resolution.
Narama ta sa discussion sir?
Mister Chair, we are already on the discussion period, just a point of order Mister Chair.
Yes, anymore discussion? Amendment? Any objection? Hearing of the motion, see by put.
Thank you.
Authority ni Mayor.
Ah, I move to pass ah, resolution authorizing the honorable municipal mayor to sign the, the memorandum of agreement between the Department of Agriculture Regional Field Office, ah, at pagadang city, and the municipal local government unit, okay, pa sambugay, ah, represented by its municipal mayor, the honorable Annamil Seuligario.
So, the. July seconded by the Royal Mohammed, discussion?
For clarification Mister Chair, is the mowa were already signed by the ah, Department of Agriculture Regional Office, na, napirmahan na sir? Nana?
Hala pa.
It was, it was signed already by the mayor.
Okay.
Okay, so anymore discussion? Objection, hearing of the motion, see by approve. Thank you. Napay other matters, wala na?
Next regular session picture?
Twenty, twenty. Okay. Yes, and this motion for the adjournment of the 73rd regular session is now adjourned.
Thank you.